Good morning, please stand.
If I had a moment of prayer. Dear Lord, we come humbly for you, thanking you for your many blessings. We ask that you bless this board, its employees, the college, its employees, and the community that we serve. We ask traveling grace to and from for the individuals that are here. And thank you for all of the individuals that are at work every day to make this college a success. We ask these blessings in your son Jesus' name as I pray, and in whose name you may pray. Amen.
My pledge is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, I want to welcome everybody to the meeting this morning. And before we start with some of our business, I just want to say a word or two. We've had the privilege over the last couple of years of visiting all of our campuses. We've been, of course, up to Seminole and Gibbs and Tarpon and Clearwater. And we have a lot of our meetings up at the epicenter. But based on the spread we have here this morning, I'm going to suggest that all of our meetings are going to be here at the Midtown campus. Yvonne Olmer, where are you? I know you're here somewhere, unless you're still in the kitchen. There she is. Yvonne, thank you so much. This is unbelievable. When I go home and tell my wife tonight that I had ribs for breakfast, she's going to say, "Well, somebody has outdone me at lab." Thank you very, very much. I also want to thank and commend the facilities, folks. This place is a jewel, and it's been a little while since I've been down to the Midtown campus, but walking in here today, it looks like it's absolutely sparkling, brand-new, and I commend all of you for your efforts to keep this place looking as good as it does and making us all proud. So, thank you very, very much. I know Yvonne probably had a little help. I'm sure there's a list of folks. I don't have all their names, but your efforts, I appreciate them. Thank you. Before we get into the formal matters of our agenda, Mr. Gibbons is going to have a little presentation, and I believe we are going to step out into the hallway. The hallway, and then we'll come right back in. So if we can make our ways out into the hallway just for a few minutes, please.
He was impressed like that. I don't know that he'll ever be a politician, but he just graduated from law school.
How long they had a meeting with him?
And he's keeping his hand in. So, I may see him one day.
I know. That's why, one reason I went to tell Askey instead.
Okay, folks, thank you very much for your patience on that, and we're going to start with the agenda. And Dr. Furlong, we have a couple of retirements.
Eileen Foley.
And Evelyn.
Karen.
And Gabe Prue.
Come on up here if you would.
Martha.
Devon, would you like to add a few words on the stand?
Absolutely. They say that when a teacher retires, a library retires with a teacher. And this is a vast library that is retiring. I've known Eileen for 15 years, at least, and she has been a joy to work with, and I can tell you that the students were truly, truly, truly deserving. And I'm glad that she's been part of our college family, and I miss you.
Karen, do you like standing as president?
I concur. Eileen was one of the first staff in my office when I first became president. My interaction with her sort of set the tone for my interaction with others on campus as well, with the way that she talked with me and worked with me, and I really appreciated it, and I'll always remember it.
We miss you, and thank you.
It's Foley, do you want to say anything?
And just thank you. I'll miss everybody.
We have a resolution for you. Thank you very much. And Marilyn Scott. Allstate Center Group. That's right, that's what you said. Hey, Sid.
Marilyn, after about 15 years, is going on to the next chapter of life of retirement. And she has been just a strong matriarch of the Allstate Center. Much-needed, a little soft kindness with a bunch of cops and firemen on it. She added a dimension to us that we desperately needed and really kept us in line for many, many years. And we're going to miss her, but we wish her the very, very best, and she has earned her retirement.
Carrie, would you like to say something?
You can see all the big guys up here, you know. Behind every strong program, every good man, every successful even, what they say, a strong woman, and it's been a strong woman behind every program for the last 15 years. So, we surely going to miss her.
I'm all the way to miss.
Hey, Scott, do you like to say anything?
I don't think so.
Do you have any stories you'd like to share?
Two seconds. Mr. Brett, Mr. Chair, earlier you talked about this fine spread. I just, I'd like to diminish Dr. Olmer, but she also has a sidekick who I would get killed if I don't mention her, is Dr. Hildegard Shirley, who is here at this site every day. Where are you, Dr. Shirley? She's hiding behind the pole. That's Dr. Shirley, and she's here every day. She's the director of this site and does an excellent job. Thank you again. So, I know she's been preparing for this day for a while. Every time I see her, she's like, "I'm so excited." So, thank you for the food, thank you for all you do, and you and Dr. Olmer did a great job. Thank you.
Ken, can you hear?
Yes, I can.
Oh, good. Mr. Burke?
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Just to let you know, we had a presentation already for Mr. Keen, and we just did our retirement resolutions, so we are ready to move on with the agenda. Item five, approval of minutes. That's where we are right now.
And Ken, you missed some good food this morning.
I brought some ribs.
Sorry to miss that.
They got ribs this morning already. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. A second, please. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry. So moved, are we adopting resolutions?
Chair, Ken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, moving on through old business, Mr. Lang, nothing to report, correct?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKenzie?
No sir.
On through to item D. Can I entertain a, ask somebody to make a motion on these agenda items, please? So moved.
All of them?
We want to talk, we want to have a review of item D2, is that correct?
Yes.
So, your motion moved? We accept the items on left, D2. Including D2. And then I can give a brief presentation? So, D1 through 7 is what you're saying? Yes, sir.
A second.
Ms. Ryder?
Oh, Carrie, may I just ask a question on one of the items?
Yes.
On D4, I guess the board memo doesn't point out that that's a renewal, that we already leased space. It looks at first, when I reread it again after my conversation with Dr. Furlong, it looks like it's totally new lease, and I think it just needs to be pointed out that we're already renting space to daycare. This is just a reduced amount, and that's what the reason is for the revised lease, but they're doing it through a totally new lease. I'm not sure if I made myself clear or further muddied things up, but I just think that's important to point out that it's not some new type of partnership, it's an ongoing partnership, just a reduced lease.
Great, thank you, Mr. Burke. Okay, Ms. Ryder?
What we wanted to do this morning, Michael Carter's got a small presentation on the Olympia building. The Olympia building is kind of interesting because although it isn't a design-build project, we're fast-tracking it. So, we've already taken a final GMP, preliminary final GMP to you, so that we could get started on the, some of the structural work up there. And now we're coming back with the next phase of this, so that we can put the envelope on the building and structure the roof on the building. At this point, the preliminary GMP for the project is still at $9,176,884, so that's good news. So, this is the next phase. We'll bring another phase back to you when we get the interior drawings completed, and you'll see that, and then by that time, you know, we're well on our way on the construction with that project. Conferates here, if you've got any questions, he's seen the construction going on, so it's a little bit different process for us, but it fast-tracks it and it's working well.
So, I'm just going to show you some of the exterior renderings that we saw before. Review the floor plans very quickly. Again, you've seen those before. What I'm bringing new today is a exterior fly-around, with the ability to show the whole building with some minor rendering on those components, so you can sort of get a feel for the space. Again, this is the Tarpon Springs campus, the Olympia building in the northeast corner of that campus. Within the Olympia building, the area that we're focusing on is the center portion of the warehouse. This is where the two-story, 39,000-square-foot construction is going to be, or is taking place. This is the first-floor plan. There's offices and a classroom collaborative lab area is what comprises most of the first-floor. All of the balance of the classrooms and computer labs are on the second floor, with some other student spaces up there for private study and a student workroom. And here is the rendering that you've seen before on the main entry, concept of what we'll be doing there. When we bring the plans back the next time, we'll have a little more clarity there and full definition. This main entrance, is this to the rest of the campus, or is this out? This is to the parking lot, sort of. It's on the eastern side? Yeah, it's sort of, if you consider it an L, the warehouse portion of the one-story Olympia building, it's right at the joining of those two spaces. And this is my, oh, offices there. This is a lot.
The entrance is by there, okay, correct.
And on the, from the fly-around, you'll be able to see it a little more clearer. That's the benefit of being able to show that to you today. This is the east entry. This is what you'll see from the balance of the campus. Again, we have the hill. We have some challenges that we need to deal with there. The roadway is there right now, but we don't envision having that as we move forward. We're finalizing that design and that layout. And this is another image of that entry. So, the fly-around. So, this, right here, this is the warehouse portion of the building. This is the one-story portion of the building with the current college education classrooms. This is the new entry that we were just looking at. So, that is that point, the rendering that you've seen before.
And we're just filling up that portion now, and we'll add on as we go, right?
Correct.
You see where the high two-story is up there, right there? We actually cut a big hole in the building, and we're actually building this new structure right inside. So, the portion on the east north will end up staying, we'll have a lawn, and we'll end up staying warehouse space in there. And then we'll move the next phase again to the north as we move. So, we just, if you were to see what we started with, we took a big slice out of that building.
And what we've done right now, the package you approved before allowed us to do the structure and to do that demolition. We've got the structure up. In the next couple of weeks, we're literally cutting the roof off, cutting that center section out of the building and beginning that construction. What we're approving today is a package to build that exterior envelope. We've fast-tracked this project.
And on the 40,000 square feet, how much is that being purely classroom space?
Roughly 20,000, so we're cool. Literally half the building is classroom space. So, again, with this fly-around, this is the view, this again is the warehouse portion of view from Klosterman Road. This is the view from US-19. And this is going to be the view from the rest of the campus. So, this gives it a lot more prominence, gives a location for the students to be walking to.
That's what I was concerned about in my earlier comment. How accessible is this going to be now? Because you said you've got a grade?
Correct. Right now, it's not very accessible. If you walk through the campus, there's a, you know, a six-foot-wide sidewalk right next to the roadway, and that's something that we're very concerned about, is all the student traffic that needs to be going through here. So, we, in our next phase of plans, we'll bring to a final plan, but what we're looking at is changing the access. So, right now, students would have to walk their way to get to the balance of the campus in this area, but we're looking at putting a stairway system here and accessing from the parking in this area, which will link you right up to the administration building.
So, in other words, you may enter on the second floor?
No, you'll still enter on the ground floor, but because of the hill, you're walking from a higher side of the campus, you'll go downstairs to go to the ground floor entry of the new building.
Would there be any advantage to entering on the second floor from this parking area? So, you're just walking on a straight ramp?
There, yes. That's one thing that we've looked at in the past and one thing we hope to execute in the future as we build out the rest of the building, but with the budget and the funding we have right now, it was a premium that we couldn't afford on the current scheme. So, we're trying to address it by still giving a more direct path, but you'll have to go downstairs to get there.
We actually did a plan, Mr. Johnston, to have a sort of a bridge from the hill right into the second floor, is I think what you're talking about doing. But again, you know, funding and everything, that particular piece will probably have to wait somewhere down the line, but it's designed so that we can actually do that when we have.
Well, I was thinking more or less now of handicapped students. How are they going to access that building?
We still have, we've got, this is a secondary means, which may become the primary means, but in this area here, students will have an ADA-accessible path from the balance of the campus, and instead of right now, they have to come in this direction over to the bookstore, we are going to be providing a rampway that is ADA-accessible to the same entry point on the building. So, everybody will be able to use the same entry. We're just providing two paths to it instead of one, to try and sort of spread out the student traffic and keep that congestion away from the roadway. So, we're really finalizing the plans on that, and that'll be part of what we can show you the next time we present the final GMP. But we're, are there any other questions on it, or other?
And everybody knows that area there is the bookstore and the food store.
Yeah, this area, right here, this is the bookstore, this is the cafe, this is the entry point, and there's, you know, parking and a drive along this area. So, we'll still have all of those access points, we're just adding really two more.
And by pulling the College of Ed off the main campus into this building entirely, now it's split up, we'll have a lot more parking in the front parking lot, which in drive-by is usually empty. Because you park, because they have to go back and forth now, there'll be a lot of students, College of Ed is the biggest program, so there'll be a lot of students who really don't have to go back and forth, that they'll spend the day in this building.
Yeah, so what they'll do is they'll, we'll be using this parking, this entry, this is the College of Education. It also opens up these current College of Education classrooms for two-year programs and opens up the Villaracas building for two-year programs, and our goal is to be able to remove the portable once this project is completed at the Tarpon campus. So, again, to clean up the quad and the core of the campus.
This is a hard building to integrate into the campus itself. Always a preserve of the problem.
I think you'll be pleased with the paths that we're providing to really, you know, welcome pedestrian traffic more, give a nice little green space. It's going to create, you know, an outdoor area on the east side of the, or on the west side of the building, which I think will lend towards, you know, the ultimate goal of truly integrating that with the campus.
The other thing that's interesting is back in here is the current College of Ed building, and this wing plus back in here, and when this moves into the building, the Olympia name was chosen because it wasn't anybody's name, and this will become the Villaracas building. The other one will have a new name. It will not be College of Ed anymore. So, when we had to name this, we got tired of Susan calling it the Annex, because my office was in it, so I said, "It's got to have a name." So, we called it Olympia for a while. One of the staff members came up with that, knowing that someday we'd get it all together and we'd name this after that. That was actually an action taken early on.
It's still Sam's fault.
You're not supposed to say that.
You're right, the old time, up there we'll think of it as that. Or actually, the last thing it was, was the old Flextronics building.
Thanks. Any questions, comments? Mr. Burke, anything that you would like to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second then to approve D, items 1 through 7. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Like to entertain a motion from the board to accept items E and F.
Aye, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We're now moving on to item G, the proposed changes to the VOT rules manual, which is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this point. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this issue? Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve, please? So moved.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Onto item H. Motion to approve, please?
Aye, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Dr. Furlong?
Hey, just a brief update. I leave on Wednesday for my latest coverage for the College of Presidents at the Council Presidents in Tallahassee, and then again in two weeks. Ed and I are getting good feedback from the college staff on a number of substantive issues, none of which are moving very quickly right now, and none of which are a big problem for the college, but there are some retirement issues out there, and the 9-0-1 bill you're reading about has a potential impact on us, and that we would be doing some of that certification training if that indeed passes. So, we're watching a number like that. There's a bill dealing with nursing and requiring national accreditation, which we already have, so we're not a major player in it, but if it passes, it's fine with us, because we have both national groups crediting us. So, we're in good shape on that one. Related to legislature, you probably know that this past week, three new State Board of Education members were named, actually one renewal, Kathleen Shanahan, Mark Kaplan from Mosaic, and Susan Story, who's the chair of the Council 100. And I contacted them, actually the day before they were appointed, one of our lobbyists in Tallahassee kind of gave us a heads up, and so the day they were appointed, they got a nice letter from us, and they wrote back the same day and talked about some of our issues, and so I think there's three good people on the State Board that have been at it. In terms of the revenue, it's been in the newspapers, but we do, as you know, have a small contract with John Andrew Smith to follow the revenue picture for us, and John Andrew's going to do a briefing for our staff and for G. Genshin and her staff and for Lars and his pleasant people Monday, next Monday. That's something we've done the last two, three years, and it really helps us get a good handle on what we're reading in the paper, what we might be able to realistically do in the budget. So, that occurs on Monday. PICO is, our share of it will all be renovation and remodeling money. Susan gets nervous when she looks at the PICO bill, because there were two or three colleges who had major projects still on the list, and they're finishing them out to get them off the list. But as you look down the list, you'll see 3 million, 2 million, 3 million, 33 million in Pasco, 2 million, 1 million. So, there's a few like that, that there's some logic to it, but if you're sitting in the 2 million category, you're like wondering about it, but it really, there's a procedure. Our former Lisa from our staff is handling that, the PICO thing. So, we're on top of that. And then the one other thing I was going to mention was, I've got a little memo here from John Holdak, who's our budget guy, and I'm just going to just jot off two, three points and I'll be done. The allocations from legislative leadership to Senate and House committees began 300 million apart, with the Senate committee authorized for a larger amount. Tuition increases are being proposed on both sides at 8%. Overall, the Senate proposal, including federal funds, would result in a 5.4% increase in funding for the system over 2009-10 funding, while the House proposal results in a decrease of 5.8%, 5.4, 5.8. You often see that in legislator with the two houses, where there's room to compromise somewhere in the middle. So, we don't know that'll happen, the House position could prevail or the Senate, which would be wonderful at this point, but more likely they'll come together and there'll probably be a tuition increase. That's a month in advance. On the other hand, both sides are trying to have their bill done by sometime next week. They'll vote the out-of-committee Corporations Committee on Friday of this week. So, they're moving fast so they can have a month to argue, and we're trying to work this out between the two of them. The Senate proposal fully funds the operation cost for new facilities, while the House proposal only funds the annualized portion of that. The, there's no matching money for Philip Benjamin or for the Facilities Challenge Grant Program at this point in either budget, something we'd really like to see, but didn't really expect to see this year. They did allow us, as you know, to list all of our projects officially, so when money does become available, the match can still occur. So, it's not, if you gave a million dollars last year, it doesn't mean it'll never be matched, but the odds of it being matched this year are not real high right now, because they're using all the money for operating. And one other one marked here. Both sides at this point, in very different ways, are proposing covering the increase in the FRS retirement. So, we're hoping that holds in there, because that's something we have to budget if they don't. It has to be covered. If they provide the money, which is the normal thing, we just, our costs go up and we get the money to cover those costs. If not, we've got to find the money during the budget process. Right now, that looks fairly positive. So, it's really early to see where we're going, but, you know, the scenario, if I had to talk about the budget today, would probably be no new money, except for whatever we do on the tuition increase, while we grew about 12% as a college. So, it's not a pretty picture, particularly after two or three years of similar pictures. On the other hand, we, you know, we're positioned well with reserves in terms of when the federal money goes away next year is the big drop-off for everybody. We tried to hold a good bit of that in reserves so that we can cushion next year. And so, we're postured well going into the budget process, but not, by the time they start meeting, we'll have a speech, and it won't be really positive starting out.
Dr. Furlong, I have, Mr. Chair, Mr. Gibbons?
I have just two questions. In the governor's budget, what was his, what did his budget look like in terms of the increase?
I don't have the percentage with me, but it was dramatically higher.
For the, for the students?
Oh, the tuition, no tuition increase.
No tuition increase.
And dramatic new state money. We put a higher rate system. So, you know, as you know...
So we're somewhere in between those three.
Yes, yes. But as you know, the legislature takes the budget on day one of the governor and says thank you. And now they're two weeks into the process, so the governor's budget's behind us now. He has the ability to come back at the end of the process and veto something.
Yeah.
But as we go, really, they start off with that budget and they've been amending it since. So we're now into a Senate and House budget.
So we're looking to wait till probably Congress to figure out.
Tom, is there any feel, like you said, you're meeting Monday with the consultants, how about the following years? You know, it's one thing to tighten our belt this year, but how about the, because we'll probably end up using any reserves this year to get everything balanced and keep the school going, but how about the following year, the following years after that? Is there any forecast of when the state will actually be able to turn itself around?
I'm going to let him talk to it on Monday, but because they just had a revenue conference this week. And, you know, what you're reading in the newspaper is that there's some kind of bottom seems to have been reached and some positive signs, but nothing like a dramatic increase that's going to change things. And next year's the year the federal money goes away. So that's luckily, sort of luckily, that's non-recurring dollars. We've not put any of the federal money into hard-line positions. So when that goes away, I wouldn't anticipate losing staff, but if we've hired the staff on a time-limited basis for two years to get through the growth, that'll have to be looked at next year. But those are only, we'd be people that were hired with that in mind. And then the other little scenario that's out there that we've got to have in the back of our mind at all times is when the economy improves, the enrollment will dip. So it'll be potentially more dollars.
True.
And less students to serve. So it's important that we have some of our hires be in the non-recurring kind of category, whether OPS or adjunct, that we seriously address that so that when the dip occurs, our full-timers are protected. And that's what we've been doing, it's always been our policy, but we're right, we always say that that happens in community colleges, it is happening right now in this community college.
Well, that's typical, you know, when the times get good, our enrollment doesn't accelerate as fast.
Right.
Because when people are out of work, they come to retrain.
And the whole budget this year, any new dollars are geared to growth because some colleges grew 45% in the last three years. We grew 21%, 25%, something like that. We've had the growth, but some have had as much as 44%, 45%. So we won't, you won't see us, even though growth is hard to address right now, you won't see us not marketing, you won't see us closing sections. We've got to keep the growth going, or when the dip occurs, not only will we lose, because the students decline, the budget declines, but we also would be in this phenomenon of it all coming in, sort of compounding each other. So we've got, oh, the growth formula, we have the growth formula. So they would still be catching up Seminole, still be catching up Valencia at our expense. So luckily, we've started to grow and we're growing 10% to 15% in the lower division. Upper division's grown 25% a semester. And the upper division budget scenario is we could lose, when they take all the new programs and put them in with ours, there's the potential of us losing $100,000, $200,000. Hopefully, we won't. But we have a significant reserve in the upper division, so we're able to cover our growth there from a reserve just as target that's in the categorical for the upper division. We're not allowed to spend any student money or any appropriation for the upper division on the lower. So it's in a nice pot of money and it's got a significant reserve in it. So you'll see that part of our budget grow several positions to address that 25% a semester, but we have the money to do it. On the two-year side, we have soft money to address needs in the short term.
Well, how about the opposition to the four-year program? Is that kind of quieted down?
The overall opposition, I would say, has quieted down. What's happening is the Council 100 and Florida Chamber are still calling for a moratorium on new programs at the other 27 colleges until a master plan is done. It really doesn't affect us, our law is different, but as part of the system, we're arguing with them to not put the moratorium on us unless you put it on the university system. And that discussion continues, but that's not going to be voted on this session.
So what you've just said, that last sentence, our unique position will probably stay the same at least for a year without having been adjusted to the rest of the 28.
Not this session, I think we're secure. Then the state board, when the session's over, will be talking the whole year about planning and we'll have to be really ready during that planning discussion to speak out on four-year and to speak out on how our model works. People like Kathleen Shanahan, who potentially could chair the state board, who likes our, likes us and likes our model, but she's very nervous about another small school starting a four-year program. And there is no plan, so there's some understanding why that, and why you'd feel that way, but we need to make sure we step up and talk about it.
Well, and to piggyback on Dr. Furlong, Mr. Johnson, I had two conversations with Dean Cannon and Will Weatherford, the next two speakers, and also Jeff Atwater over the last two weeks. And Will Weatherford adamantly opposes anything touching St. Petersburg College. He thinks we are entrepreneurial and have done things the right way. And I would imagine that he and Dean, over the next four years, are probably going to help us try to expand our programs. They love St. Petersburg College. That's the first thing they ask me about every time they see me. Along with Senator Atwater, he always asks how the programs are growing, you know, what's my opinion? And I always say, we're a model for the country. We need to get more folks in here to look at what we're doing. So I would imagine that we're probably protected for a little while because of the bold steps that this board took prior to me even coming on here and the things that you and other folks have done at Dr. Butler. I think that we're in a good position. My one question though, Dr. Furlong, is that are we going to be, and then I asked this of the speaker, are we going to, we should be rewarded for that as opposed to being hurt. That's why I asked about the governor's budget. We need to get an increase because we're doing more and we're out front. A college like Valencia, I was surprised to hear, well, Ken Burke and I were in Washington, DC this past week, that Valencia Community College has outgrown Broward Community College. And so if you look at Central Florida, the I-4 corridor, the increase seems to be happening across this corridor. We need to be pressing to make sure that some of that money the governor is talking about actually comes to St. Petersburg College.
Absolutely. And one final thing on the four-year, the St. Pete Times is doing a story on the master plan in about two weeks and had a long interview the other day to talk about our model. It was a very positive feeling interview, let's see, you know, let's see how it relates to all the other people that they talked to, but so there'll be some press on that in about two weeks. I've got a feature attached to it.
Mr. Brett, I have a question, if you have a moment.
Go right ahead.
Dr. Furlong, you went over fairly quickly the retirement bill. This potentially could have, you know, that's different interpretations of what's already proposed. Some parts of it just affect new employees hired after July 1st, but there's a good portion of it affecting current employees and the calculation of their retirement benefits. And if the bill, as I understand, is passed in its current form, you'll see a herd of people retiring before June 30th to protect their retirement plan with the highest five years. Is this something, have we made any effort to educate the staff of our college as to the effects of this bill as it's currently proposed? And so if they are so inclined to contact their legislator to voice their concern and opposition to the bill as it's currently worded, that they do so? Because I think we owe it to our employees to let them know the, how drastic a change this is. One of the things we're proud of at St. Pete College is the longevity of our faculty especially, and I know with those retirement resolutions, there's always press of how many years of dedicated service. And I think one of the things that not only are great college, but also the attractiveness of the Florida retirement system that helps people stay with a stable employer and it's good for our college. So my question is, how are we doing in educating our staff to know the effects of this? Because if it passes, I think the worst thing we can do is just, you know, talk about it after it passes and say it's a done deal and our staff will be tremendously disappointed in the results.
Well, where we are right now is we're not in the bill and the bill is talking about reducing insurance benefits and reducing retirement benefits and it's in a separate committee and it's all targeting at state employees. So we've got to be a little careful we don't get involved with a campaign that pulls us into the bill potentially, for those who are looking at the corporate side or retirement plans are going away and trying to do the same thing to state employees, which I'd be opposed to. But we're not state employees, we're employees of this board and so we're not in that bill right now, but we could be in it in 30 seconds with an amendment. So I know the, Kathy, are you here?
I thought Tom, it affected all FRS employees.
The, most of the language I've seen so far has, it's FRS who are state employees. You may have seen a later draft, I mean, they're meeting this week, I've been here.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you know, that's a good point, Ken, and we will do that. Kathy Ladoe, our, from HR, has, there is a group of HR staff that meet statewide and they've been exchanging emails the last few days. If we see it going in that direction, that's a great idea.
But I think it's important, again, we don't have to state a position, we can say this is what the effects of the bill are, communicate that.
Okay.
And it's up to our staff to decide what they want to do.
Okay.
And I think the faculty senate would be especially interested in knowing, keeping up with it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brett.
Anything else, Dr. Furlong?
No, I think that's where we are.
Thank you. Item 10, other business, we have a presentation on student services.
I'm just, Pat, Ann was going to...
Terry, Terry, I'm going to say goodbye on the phone call and I'm going to meet with Tanja afterwards, so set up an appointment to review that presentation, is that fine?
That's fine, Mr. Burke, thank you for being with us and I'm sorry to say you missed an outstanding breakfast this morning.
I'm sorry about that, too. I love good food.
Lots of good soul food.
We're going to use some ribs.
Mr. Chair, Ann Cooper was going to do a context and set this up and she's ill today. But Devron and Ken, in particular, the last few months, they asked about a workshop on student services, who broke Financial Aid out and did that last time, and this is our little talk about the rest of what's going on today.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We want to thank you for the opportunity of sharing with you what we in Student Affairs were doing. And when I say we, it's not just Pat and myself, it's a whole lot of people in the audience, our provosts and others who help us facilitate students through our process. One of the things I want to open in sharing is that we are looking in Student Affairs at a whole different model that was developed by NACAD, which is a national organization for academic advising. And we've developed this model for all of our Student Affairs operations. And that model believes that Student Affairs staff are just as much a part of the teaching and learning process as the academic side of the house, because we are teaching students how to utilize our services, how to advocate for themselves, how to register and things of that nature. And so we've been working with our staff about the teaching and learning model and looking at ourselves as instructors of Student Affairs. And so Pat and I are glad to stand before you. You met our other colleague from Financial Aid, Mike Bennett, last month. And so Mike says he's going to chill out in the back today and allow Pat and I to give you just a glimpse of Student Affairs. In 15 minutes, it's very hard to give you the whole kit and caboodle, so we're going to just wet, you know, just get your appetite wet for this in hopes that we can come back at another time. This presentation does not address all of our processes. It addressed basically the departments and what we have to offer students through the enrollment funnel. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Furlong.
Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Furlong, thank you very much for the opportunity to share. I'm going to share some data that, the Factbook is a great resource, but some of the data I'm going to share you won't find in the Factbook, and so I thought it would be interesting to show you some of this. This shows unduplicated enrollment, head count enrollment, credit-seeking students. We're really just addressing the credit side of the house today, not the non-credit side of the house. And compares the spring 2008 session return compared to where we are today, the spring. And you can see, we had 25,746 students two years ago compared to 30,770 students today. That's a roughly 20% increase in two years. And you can see the baccalaureate degree, students in the baccalaureate programs significantly increased and they're also in the AS programs, a big increase in the AS programs. This next slide shows the origin and that a full 70% of our baccalaureate students have earned a credential, either an A or an A S degree at St. Pete College. So we are recruiting our own students. This slide talks about online enrollment, and again, it's head count data. What's significant here is that we had a 20% increase in head count over that two-year period, but if you look at the number of students taking at least one online course for this term, it's 15,122 students, that's a 38% increase over two years ago. Again, this is just head count data, it does not represent student semester hour or FTE. What's interesting is that if you look at this data, almost 50% of our students are taking at least one online course. And even more interesting is that 25% of our students are only taking online courses. One out of every four students is only taking online courses. Okay, this slide may be a little misleading in the title, the transient nature of our students. We do have transient students and it's in a strict term, that means students who are enrolled at maybe St. Pete College and USF, but that's not what this is talking about. This is to describe, illustrate how many of our students are taking classes at multiple campuses. And there's a little footnote at the bottom of this slide, this is a duplicated head count across campuses and excludes online enrollment. So for example, Clearwater is serving a distinct number of students, 7,159 students at the Clearwater campus. However, 4,139 of those students are only taking their classes at Clearwater. The rest of them are taking classes at other campuses. So as we talk about delivering services to our students, it's really important because we do have students who are taking classes at so many campuses, that we are consistent in how we deliver those services. This slide further breaks that out. If you take a look at Clearwater campus, again, 7,159 students, distinct students served, excluding online enrollment. You can see, they share a lot of enrollment with Seminole, 543 students are also taking classes at Seminole, 813 students are also taking classes at St. Pete Gibbs and 976 commute up to Tarpon. No surprise with St. Pete Gibbs, they share a lot of their enrollment with Clearwater, Downtown, Midtown.
Does that give you an indication that maybe we're not offering the right classes in the right spots?
It could, it also, it could. It could be an indicator that students are not able to find the open seats at the campus their first choice.
Is there a way to resolve that, or?
Well, we have productivity standards and I think that at all the sites, we try to achieve those productivity standards. But some of the movement is because the student wants to take a course near their jobs or where their children are in school and, you know, it's, there are a lot of variables as to why they go to multiple campuses.
There's a traumatic demographic where Pasco Hernando Community College, that their students come down in the Pinellas to work and they take a lot of their courses at Clearwater or Tarpon. And it throws off their plan completely. Well, same happens with us, we'll have Clearwater people who work downtown St. Pete and they go to the downtown campus. So it's not all negative, it's part of it is they would have so much accessibility.
And I think that's the cool thing, we have so many sites that students can choose from and still have their needs met.
So you don't think it's a problem, it's a plus maybe?
No, the, I think it's a plus because they have other options where at other institutions it may, they may only have one single site and that is the only option between the online and the various sites, they get a chance to move around. And it depends on what's happening for them that night, Wednesday nights, some students want to go here, it just depends on what's going on.
And we're, well, we have productivity standards, we're growing, I mean, we're intending, we're not closing the door. Everybody knows that's how, first of all, serving students and secondly, that's how the formula works, so it's not an attempt to...
So I know that we would offer like ENC 1101 on every campus, but are we making sure that maybe if there's a program that's site-specific, like on Tarpon, the education program, there are other education programs throughout the other campuses as well?
You raise a good point and I think it's one that I'll take back with me and study a little bit. You raise a good point, and I think it's one that I'll take back with me and study a little bit to see if a student is taking three of their classes at Saint Pete and one class at Tarpon, why are we taking their classes at Tarpon?
I think Dave's saying that's a good point.
Okay, this is our Student Affairs mission statement, it's a very action-oriented mission statement. Action for both the Student Affairs practitioner and, as Tanja said, the students. The first part of this says to provide best practice Student Affairs services to our increasingly diverse student body. And best practices, basically, we continually are looking for ways to improve, and we're looking outside of ourself, we're looking at best practice institutions, and does that best practice fit the culture that gives a college? Diverse student body, again, you can see ethnicity, you can see gender in the fact book. One of the things you may not see in the fact book is, for example, our international students. We have over 300 international students from over 60 different countries, and that's poised to grow in the next few years.
Where are those students generally, what campus do they generally function at?
Saint Pete Gibbs, Clearwater, and Tarpon primarily. There are some in Seminole, but those three primarily. The second part of that is to encourage and promote student engagement and active learning. We do focus a lot on teaching students how to help themselves. We also teach our staff that this is, we're always constantly learning. We have professional development workshops and training, so we're active learners as well.
Pat, let me ask a quick question. You said that the international students are mostly operating out of Saint Pete, Gibbs, Clearwater, and Tarpon. Are we, do we know what the majority of those students are, for example, in Clearwater, I'm sure there's a lot of Hispanic? Now, we help, we got programs in Student Affairs to help them transition to the campus easily, or is that an area where we need to increase?
We'll talk about that later in the presentation when we talk about international students. We do have a new model that is still under development on how we're going to help international students come to our country and transition to the American culture, and that's an area that we're working on.
And the last part of this is to cultivate a culture of collaboration and accountability among our Student Affairs practitioners. We, for a long time, the old model was kind of a silo model, where we had admissions, we had advising, we had financial aid, we had testing, et cetera, and all that. And we are trying to break those silos and really engage in team building and training across those areas. And where that training comes, comes some accountability, so we assess our Student Affairs practitioners and keep them accountable. This kind of depicts that, it's a visual illustration of the vision statement. Through studying best practices and problem solving, going outside of the organization, we're constantly trying to improve the organization in Student Affairs. As far as active learning, professional development workshops, we have one last Tuesday, with about 250 Student Affairs professionals there. Instruction and training, assessment, and then changing the culture. Through role modeling, Tanja and I are not afraid about campus wool over sleeves and get into the thick of it. Team building, motivation, those are ways that we're trying to change the culture of Student Affairs. I'm gonna primarily talk about access and recruitment. Tanja's in there to talk about the experience of the student once they've been here, and then we'll talk a little bit about graduation success. As far as access, we have recruitment, and I'll talk a little bit more in detail about what that involves. We have a call center, financial aid, Mike Bennett presented at the last meeting. Financial aid reports, Mike reports to Tanja, but it's still kind of a recruitment, financial aid packages is a recruitment initiative. We do a lot with the K-12 system, I'm gonna talk about Senate Bill 1908 in a minute. These are some acronyms, College Reach Out Program, Summer of Success. We also engage the community through the recruitment and recruiters to go out to businesses and education fairs and the like that. Admissions include Central Records, testing, and that's placement testing, tuition payment, new student orientation, new student open houses, which was a new pilot last, a new pilot project from last summer. And then the enrollment process, which includes the MySPC Answer Place, the MAP, which I'll talk about in a moment, and all the online functions that students can do to help themselves. These are my direct reports, I have six direct reports, I have a great team, and I feel blessed to be able to work with such talented individuals. I'll point out that Alicia Vitale, who I introduced to the board in January, she just started in January, that position had been vacant for a long time. And Debbie Proctor, who is the manager of our student system support, she works with our IT department to make sure that the student system is working appropriately and helps troubleshoot issues. That position was just filled in October, so I'm just grateful to have a full staff. I feel like I'm running on full six cylinders now, it's great. All right, as far as enrollment management and improvement, I mentioned a minute ago, we have a call center. We actually have three different call centers. The enrollment management call center is the general information number, it's the phone number that's widely advertised in the community, you'll see it on buses, you'll see it in publications. That call center is located at the district office, we get roughly 18,000 phone calls a month in 2009. The flavor of those phone calls, it runs the gambit from students that have issues, that they wanna talk to a particular advisor, or they're having a problem. It could be somebody saw an advertisement for some kind of an event sponsored by the college, Palladium, whatever, and they wanna know details about that event. Could be that they wanna know just the hours of the college's operations, and you see the hours there for the call center. And the staffing that I have in that call center right now is two full-time employees and six to eight part-time student employees. And I'll make sure it's a challenge, because part-time employees employ for a long period of time, they're transient, they're students, and so training them is a challenge. Keeping them up to date with what's going on at the college is a challenge. We do have four recruiters, we have two recruiters in the upper division for 20-plus programs. Now, note that back in 2003, when we started the upper division programs, we started with two recruiters. So that's a potential area that I put in my plans for some growth, as far as personnel to expand for the division programs. We have one cycle recruiter who primarily responds to voicemail and email. We have a webpage where future students can go and request information, and the correspondent, and he primarily is responding to those inquiries. And we have one traditional high school recruiter for our 16 high schools, which is a little neat. All of them pitch in from time to time, we have major recruitment events. Education fairs, college fairs, baccalaureate will have an event to draw in potential students, and they all pitch in regardless of whether their primary duty is a baccalaureate or not. They also go out and help the campuses during our peak enrollment to serve students.
The K-12 recruitment initiatives are things that are done by the college for anyone who is not college-eligible. And so you have your special programs, you have college for kids, we have college reach out, we have Senate Bill 1908, where we help high school students get tested for college early so that they can work on the areas that they may need help in, in English, reading, writing, or math. We also have dual enrollment in Summer of Success, where high school students can get a jump start on college and get better prepared, so that when they come in in August, they may not have as much remedial or developmental courses to take. It is a program only offered now at the Saint Pete and Clearwater campus, and I know that Tarpon and Seminole are interested in expanding that program as well. We have a lot of other initiatives for students who are in the K-12 system, we're just sharing a few here today. And Financial Aid is also doing some recruitment-type things. They're going out to high schools and helping students get their FAFSA done correctly and on time. They're also having campaigns on the campuses to recruit students, to get them to come out and fill out their FAFSA app early. The good thing that Mike Bennett has done is, he has worked through the system in conjunction with data to get Financial Aid packets up and ready to rock and roll three months early. And so we used to wait until June, and I think that's what caused some of the bottleneck we would get in July and August, but now students can apply for their aid for the next academic year, and we will actually respond and process that earlier. That is a huge recruitment initiative, because students will come if they know their money is going to be there. And I think it's going to help us in the MAP areas as well, in cutting down on some of that bottleneck.
Okay, Central Records is a back-office department located at the district office. And eventually, every admissions application, whether the student applied online, whether they mailed in their application, whether they sent it to campus, it makes its way to Central Records. And we receive in Central Records approximately 1,700 applications a month, new applications. And I did some number crunching yesterday, and for the first two and a half months of 2010, from January 1 through March 15, we have received 14% more applications than the first two and a half months of 2009. So the enrollment growth is still coming. There's several, what I call, leading indicators to try to forecast enrollment. Admissions applications is one, the number of Financial Aid applications is another, the number of transcript evaluations or transcripts received for evaluation is another, and the number of phone calls that we've received in the call center is another. And all of those are up. The transcript, the number of transcripts that have come in in the first two and a half months of this year versus the first two and a half months of 2001 is up 7.2%. Now, keep in mind, not everybody who applies has attended another college, so that's why it doesn't match the 14% of admissions applications. Those are two main functions, processing admissions applications and transcript evaluations. Dr. Susan Fell is the director of admissions and records, she primarily serves as the college's registrar. She also trains our Student Affairs staff on FERPA, which is the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. Many of you may get phone calls from students and/or parents of students with an issue, complaint, and you might pick up the phone and call Tanja. You don't call me yet, and that's good, you can call Tanja. And Tanja's probably gonna tell you, well, do we have a written consent from the student to share that information with you? And if we don't, she's not gonna be able to give you much information, and that's because of FERPA. Residency for in-state tuition, this is a big deal. It's governed by a state statute and a Board of Education rule. And it poses a lot of frustration for students, because we're dealing with their money. Just because they've been here for 12 months doesn't necessarily mean that they meet the threshold of being an in-state resident according to statute and rule and can receive in-state tuition. There's a process that we have to go through, we are audited on that process. So it's an area where there's some consternation in students. We have several articulation agreements with other post-secondary institutions, the Penn House County School Board. Those are not managed, but a lot of work is involved with Central Records in terms of awarding credit based on those articulation agreements in Central Records. Central Records does graduation checks for students who apply for graduation. They also do in-house printing of diplomas.
Question, right?
Yes.
So students have to do a graduation check on their own, you don't send them some, something, and here's where you are?
We encourage them to see an advisor or Student Affairs generalist, and I'll explain that term in a minute, to make sure that the student has met all of the requirements before they graduate. Because there isn't, as of last spring, a $30 graduation fee, and it's not refundable. So we stress, please see an advisor to make sure you've met or will meet all the requirements. College-wide testing falls under me, this is not, this is placement testing, it's standardized testing, it's not. If a student has to make a, make up a test in a particular class, it's not what we're talking about here. Senate Bill 1908 is Florida legislation that was passed last spring. It's a collaborative process between the state, community colleges, and their local school boards, where we administer the CPT to high school juniors. And it's an effort to increase college readiness. If they're deficient in a particular subject area, they have their senior year to make that up. The plan is that they could actually take a course, not through us, but through the K-12 system, their senior year, thus saving them time and money once they come to us. That's absorbed a lot of our time. We did a pilot program in February with us going out to three high schools and actually administering the test on three different high schools. A lot of time involved with that. You're probably familiar with a class exam. The state of Florida legislation last year did away with the exam, but they did not do away with the-
Competency.
-the law that shows that students still have to demonstrate competency before they graduate in English, reading, and math. So colleges were left to scramble and try to come up with amongst themselves ways to demonstrate proficiency. We've done that in collaboration with the state and other colleges, but just because the class has gone away doesn't mean the requirement has gone away.
Well, yes, there are so many people that have finished, that have passed all the sets of the class, what they do now is, do you have to take the class test?
There is no more class test.
So they want to come in and show they're competent in that area through whatever tests they have?
CPT, we've also developed a course, an angel, that they can go through, and there's an appeal process.
Wow, there's an appeal process.
Lastly, Alicia Vitale, our college-wide testing administrator, brings with, or she's new, as I mentioned, a lot of experience with best practices in terms of testing, making sure the environment for testing is right, making sure that the procedures are above board, to try to minimize any type of G. We're also involved with awarding test credits through accelerated mechanisms like AP, CLAP, and ID. This is a, slide to share with you. It shows the students who took the CPT between June and August of last year, and where they fared. And you can see, math is especially troubling for students, still remains so. 70% of our new students who took the test in that time period are not testing at college level. They need some form of college cutback. The good news is, there's several things that we're doing to try to alleviate that, including the Senate Bill 1908, the college readiness initiative. There's some grant development that's being worked on by Dean Michael Campbell and Dean Shannon Briggs to try to have some intervention and get these students through remediation faster.
And I think, too, the other thing that the deans are working on, they're partnering with the K-12 content experts in math to show what college-level math expectations are, to make sure that whatever they're calling advanced math, it reaches what we call basic math, so that the connection is better. Dr. Campbell's also doing the same with reading and writing, and so we're excited about developing those relationships so that students who take honor courses, and unfortunately end up coming, and some of them end up taking a placement test, and your parents complaining, "My child is so smart," you know, and we're, you know, trying to work through all of that. So we are trying to bridge the partnership with K-12 as well, so that we can bring-
And what's the reception then for the K-12 folks? Because you don't want it to be a deterrent, because that is pretty bad, especially in math. You just don't want it to be a deterrent for kids that want to go to college, because they've not done well in math or any one of these core areas, you still wanna push-
You still want to push them to the middle of college. How has the partnership worked thus far?
It's been great. We have a monthly meeting. We call it the PAC meeting with Pinellas County leaders and us. And we discuss issues like this, FCAT and other things as a team to work together to address those things. And also, to make sure we're bringing back the latest changes at SPC to them and they're bringing us the latest changes through K through twelve. So, they've been open to that. In the reading area, they've reached out in reading because in K through twelve, we're learning that a lot of their reading instructors are not actually experts in the reading area. And so, Dr. Campbell's working with them on some of that.
And then, my next question, the next question would be, if they mastered the skills on the FCAT to graduate, does that really put them in line or in line with where we need to have them to step onto a college campus?
I don't have any data on FCAT completion and CPT. I don't think you're the same.
Not close.
Not even close?
Basically, all the research, and you know, I'm not a mathematician, but I've worked with CPT in forever. And if you take Algebra One, Algebra Two, and Geometry in high school, you pass the CPT and you need no remediation. The only course that's required in high school is Algebra One. So, you could go through high school and survive the FCAT and get an award and everything else. And you come here and you're not ready, you're not college-ready. Now, we don't close you out. We say, you need to take the developmental courses. So, what the phenomenon that's going on is Commissioner of Education is trying to to align FCAT with CPT and increase the requirements in math and other subjects in high school, academic subjects. That's been going on since the fifties. And, but Algebra One, when they passed it, it was like, Algebra One was not required till the mid-eighties in high school. And when they passed it, they had to hire lots of teachers, it was a big thing. They wanted, the study said, add all three as requirements. And the only one they could afford to do at the time is Algebra One. So, as long as that's going on, then you'd need to do these little projects and work with them. And one of the advantages of some of the pool enrollment kind of thing is those relationships have led to summer workshops where they take some of our developmental courses while they're still in high school. So, we're trying to get at the edge. But one of the big problems is there'll always be a developmental problem as long as the only requirement is Algebra One and the requirement for college-level math is those three subjects.
So, there's, if that's the case though, we need to make sure. And then, this K through twelve partnership that would really focus, because the minority students are going to fall way off if that's the case. And I guess the conversation with Dr. Williams, minority students, most, a lot of them, not most, but a lot of them have to go through this remediation process. If that's the case, this is the outcome. And we're trying to, and math is that area where most of them have a problem. We're going to have to really focus on those minority students in the eleventh grade, make sure they master those skills to be able to walk on the college campus and move to a college course immediately.
And see, that's one of the comment requests. The old days, like two years ago, they took the CPT when they got here and they were honor students, some of them. And they were shocked that we said, you're a wonderful guy, but you need to be in developmental math. Now, they're getting it in tenth and eleventh grade. So, at least they're finding out there's still a year left and then get some of that out of the way while they're still in high school. They probably still need a developmental course maybe, but not three of them. You know, and so, this is really a critical thing that's happening right now.
Okay, you're probably familiar with the MySPC brand. It is the gateway to online services for students, but not only for students, now employees use MySPC to go in and conduct business online. This is one of the best practices, best practice initiatives that we looked at. Back in two thousand and seven, we began to research how we deliver services to our students. And we looked outside of ourselves and many, many colleges were moving to a one-stop shop concept, a place where you didn't have to wait in line to go to admissions, didn't have to wait in line to go to Financial Aid. If you're going to wait in line, you're going to go to one place and you'll be met in one place. And so, through a lot of research and traveling to other schools, we adopted that and developed the MAP, the MySPC enterprise. And we have a generalist who work in the MAP and they've been cross-trained in admissions advising, enrollment, financial assistance, testing. They are the first point of contact with students. We also have specialists, which are subject matter experts in advising or Financial Aid, OSSD. So, if a generalist, the generalist has been trained up to a point, but then if they cannot help that student, we refer them to a specialist. Or we actually try and do the triage and ascertain what they're there for before they even see the generalist. And if it's something like what's called professional judgment in Financial Aid, that a generalist cannot make that determination, they refer them directly to Financial Aid to speak to a Financial Aid officer. The keys to the success of this phenomenon are staffing. And we are very cyclical. You've seen the campuses in August, they're slammed from seven-thirty in the morning till seven-thirty at night. So, we have a plan to address that cyclical major with staffing. We have Bupatty in HR, we have flex team members, we have OPS that assists on campus during those big periods.
If, how are we all staffing? How are we doing? Because the staffing is anemic at our peak times, you know? Ultimately, this is just my opinion, I can't speak for anybody else. Our customers, the students, we need to meet their needs. So, if the staffing is anemic, we need the most staffing because on occasion, I know Mr. Burke has and I have, on day one of registration and classes nights, kind of stuff, we've gone to campuses and it has been, and it's not because the staff is bad, it's because we are understaffed. How are we in terms of staffing right now?
I think the answer depends on what our service expectations are. During August, you know, when we poll the other colleges in Florida, how are your wait times? They're all the same, two to three hours. If students are waiting for the last minute to come in to get served, they're going to have a wait. We're trying to change student behavior. We're trying to alert students early, come in, see an advisor now. It's not busy in March, it's not busy in April. Come in now, let's take care of your needs now, don't wait until August. So...
Can I say something to that? Also, over the last, I would say, six to eight months, we've added staff to the MAP teams. We've added staff to Central Records, we've added staff to Financial Aid to try to address some of those issues. The things that I like about the one-stop model is that, yes, students wait during peak. They come at the last minute. Being an open-door institution, you never know who's going to come and when they're going to come. And most of them come at the last minute. But at the Council of Student Affairs last month, we had this discussion. And one of the things that the other institutions talked about is, at least with the one-stop, they don't sit in line for Financial Aid for two hours, then go here for three hours, then go there. You'll be able to handle, once you get your turn, everything at one time. We looked at what were some of the bottleneck issues in the MAP during that first week. And so, what we're looking at is setting up different timelines for our current students and communicating with them, okay, you don't want to be in the line in August, let's get you ready early and let's get you prepared so that the students we'll have in the MAP will be new students who are unknowns, who are just walking in. So, we're working on that and we'll be bringing a proposal back to the Provost Deans Council and to Cabinet on some timelines for services. And so, students will be made aware of what that is and we'll get them in earlier.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, one last question, a problem. So, because you've now cross-trained people and folks are able to answer more than one question, have you seen an increase in the wait times in the August?
No, because it's been an increase in student interest in enrollment. So, we have not seen a decrease in wait time. But this past term, it wasn't as bad because we were able to handle some staffing for Financial Aid to come in and get some things done. And also, for Central Records to get transcripts reviewed faster. That's another thing. If a student comes at the last minute, transcript in hand does not mean we're going to be able to evaluate, get it in the system, and get you registered by tomorrow. And so, those are some of the challenges that we face.
One thing that, I mentioned this last time, but one thing, we do have this phenomenon. All of this is all the time over in this extraterm growth right now. And one thing we had decided to do is we asked Tanja and Pat and Ann to develop a list of what we could do with the auxiliary fund from the textbook money and other sources, non-recurring, to get through this crunch time because it's going to go back down. And they've developed a list, primarily computer support things, that'll help the real people. And we've approved that, that's moved forward, so that'll help next semester. We've also just found out this week that we did get the WorkNet money that we talked about, where they were going to give us a million dollars in short-term positions to help the job situation in the county. Also, gives jobs to us. And so, we've matched that and we're going to have a series of positions for eight or nine months. And then, at the end, if we have any openings, that gives them a step up. But they need to know when they come in, if there's no money, they may be out too. But again, they'll help, a lot of those are student services. And then, the third area is the actual budget for next year, which is what we call unit planning. And these guys have to make their case against the academic and the others for brand-new positions. But the short term, for this two-year, three-year period, is a good time to take care of rainy day funds. And they're not, when you spend money right now with this growth, by the way, they're coming in with tuition as well. So, it's very fair to spend it right now on students for sure because, you know, they need those services and that will turn around. They've done a good job putting together a proposal.
The other key to success for this model is consistent and frequent communication to students and staff. You've got to be singing the same song shit and tell every student affairs practitioner the same thing so they can tell students the same thing. And then, training, which we now have formal training, which is relatively new. We, for a long time, did not have that. This is kind of a picture of a traditional student services delivery model. We might have had a modest amount of student self-service, online services, help students. Then you would have a layer of generalist. And in the traditional model, those were kind of your front counter help in each of the different siloed areas. And then, you would have your specialist. And what we've done or trying to do is invert that pyramid and offer a robust number of shared services. We have the generalists who are cross-trained and they try to facilitate the self-service when possible when students come in, and then we have the specialists.
I couldn't read that last line.
We tried to squeeze it.
Looks like an eye chart there.
This shows some success that we've had in the last two years with those online services. The admissions application percentage to students who apply online has grown from twenty-one percent. This spring, it went up to eighty percent. Eighty percent of our students are now applying online. Seventy-five percent of our students are enrolling and registering themselves online. Fifty-seven percent of the students are paying their fees online. As hard as we try to encourage them to do that, there's still some reluctance to pay online for whatever reason they want to come in. We send automated phone calls to them to tell them you're going to get dropped from your classes if you don't pay by this date. And they'll still come, stand in line the day before or the day of their due date. I don't know, we haven't cracked that yet. For our prepaid, these are students that used to have to come into the business office, present their prepaid card, and then their tuition fees were paid with their prepaid card. They can now do that online. Our veteran students used to have to come into advising, have their schedules verified to make sure that the VA is actually going to pay for the right classes. That's now done online as well. So, we're having some great success with our online services.
Okay, the experience. You know, it's easier to retain a student, to get more students recruited to the college because students tell students about SPC. We do a lot of advertising, a lot of other things, but you'll find a friend bringing another friend and saying, you can do it, come on. And so, the experience is very important. And in the experience, we talk about retention, keeping them there term after term through graduation, degree completion, or some students, a completion is just the one course they need for their job, depending on why they're coming, they're not all seeking degrees. And then, persistence, even students who are not successful, getting them to come back and try it again, helping them change their habits and do better. And so, we have three areas here, from the specialized programs and initiatives, the services we provide, and student engagement. You'll find in the services area, we will not be talking only about the departments that report to us because we have a lot of services that academic offer and others, like the tutoring labs and things of that nature, that help students get through. Students, by the way, are very appreciative of the tutoring opportunities that are allowed here, you know, provided for them for free. This is the organizational chart for my world and it's very intricate, detailed. But I enjoy it because I have some dotted lines to have an opportunity to work with the Associate Provost and Special Programs and Student Life and Leadership. I also have an opportunity to work with the Provost, the Deans, and others, and so, I really enjoy that. And then, you'll see my direct reports, Financial Aid, Career Services, Curriculum, OSSD, Athletics, and Veterans. Specialized programs and initiatives, this is something that's provided through basically the Gibbs Campus, but some of the programs are offered at Clearwater through student, through special programs. You'll see Student Support Services, which is a federal grant. And the thing about the college's commitment to this program is that the grant really only serves a hundred and sixty students. However, the college has been committed to another hundred and eighty students and we pay a little over fifty percent of the budget of that grant. And this grant is targeted for students who are first in family, to go to college, for students who are low income. And it provides them with support services to help them through. I forget I'm supposed to talk to the wrong...
I was just going to say you might...
I love it, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You can hear me, I'm sorry.
They need to see your emotion now.
All right.
Oh, we see it, we see it.
Okay. Student Support Services, we've had this grant for almost fifteen years and we continue to get refund, I mean renewed because of the good work we're doing. And you can see here that the Student Support Services Program cannot serve all the students who are eligible for the program. They can only serve a few. But you'll see that their success rate is much higher even for students who are eligible for the program and were not served. You see, the students who are eligible completed, thirty-three percent of them stayed. Those who didn't get served, those who were served by SSS, seventy-two percent stayed. So, we know that there's something offered by the Student Support Services Program that is very helpful to all of our students. So, what we're doing now is looking at, how can we take these services and systemically work with our students, all of them, whether they're a part of this program or not? And that's a challenge that we have now that we're trying to look at, not just pockets of services and pockets of programs, but looking at our system and seeing what can we do systemically to improve student success? Because quite a few students who come here are underprepared, are first in family, are low-income and eligible for aid. Male outreach initiative, this was initially started with the Brother to Brother program and then it expanded to the male outreach initiative and was offered at all the campuses, the Seti, the Clearwater, Seminole, and Tarpon. And then, we merged the role with student activities. And so, we're working on renewing our mission with the male outreach initiative and keeping that going. Dr. Furlong is working with us on some unique opportunities. Right now, although we work with more than three hundred males, we have three hundred men actually registered for the program while we're doing a whole lot of other services such as intramural soccer and some other things that they really enjoy. And Seminole, I think they have some kind of, I don't know what's going on, Jim, while you guys keep winning the soccer tournament, but we'll be checking in on pictures of the college students playing.
I have no gun.
As you can imagine, looking at our numbers, you'll see that our men make up thirty-seven point four percent of our enrollment as of last week. And we want to see what we can do to increase that and bring more guys here and keep them. We started with more than that.
How does that equate to other college, other major colleges across the state?
You know what, I don't know, Mr. Gibbons, but you know what, I can find out. I can find out.
It's consistent.
It's consistent. See, it's consistent.
Good answer. I know that because of athletic requirements or title design.
Thank you, Sid. Okay, Women on the Way, this is another program that originated out of the Clearwater campus, I believe with Dr. Zalupski, I can't remember, but I know she played an intimate role in this program. It is targeted for women, but we also serve men because we do have fathers now who are single parents, who are working hard to get through school and also raise their children. The unique opportunity we just had, we have expanded Women on the Way to the Midtown Center. The unique opportunity we just had, we have expanded Women on the Way to the Midtown Center, and we are offering different workshops for women in this community to come in and learn, you know, unique skills and things to be successful here. And so you see a lot of the services that they offer, from textbook lending to different peer reviews and different workshops and activities there for them. All of Women on the Way is located at Clearwater, they also serve students from St. Pete, Tarpon, Seminole, and other areas, even if the student is not able to get to the Clearwater campus. Office of Services for Students with Disabilities, we're working on a new name for that department. As you can see, it's a mouthful to say, but it's basically a program that serves our students who have disabilities. We have experienced a large growth in this area. As you can see, in all of 2008 and 2009, we served 934 students, College Y. Just last semester, we had 787. And so we have already, I am sure, exceeded our numbers from last year. And there's several reasons. Some of them could be because we now have a robust veteran services program that we just started, and the vets are coming back to school. But I think the interesting thing here is that we're continuing to grow even in that area. These disabilities are learning disabilities, some are emotional, some are, there's a whole range. And you can see that here. One of the things that we are concerned about is that we're continuing to work with students who have not registered with OSSD, but may need to be a part of this program, to receive accommodations and services. But the increase in our mental and psychological disabilities numbers continue to cause us a little bit of an alarm. And so we're working on that, and we're learning more about those kind of things. You see, ADHD is growing, some of the other areas as well. Our Veterans Affairs Services, we hired a new coordinator for Veterans Affairs. We have two staff, full-time, one at Clearwater and one at St. Pete Gibbs, to work with our veterans. Clearwater has already started working on a club, they're very active. The, I think it was Susan Ryder's team built suites for both groups, and they're very excited about that, having a place where veterans can not only come to congregate, but also have the VA on-site to work with them through their benefits and other services and initiatives. We've also partnered with outside veteran groups to provide support services to our vets. And that is growing by leaps and bounds. As you can see, we're serving 926 vets and their dependents right now. International Programs, November of '09, the Study Abroad and International Student Services merged into one department, and that department is now, I think that Dr. White is overseeing that with...
Reports to Vila Sweet.
Violetta Sweet, who reports to you. Okay. And so for International Student Services right now, as Pat mentioned, we are serving 380 students representing 61 countries. And then you'll see in Study Abroad, the things that we're doing, also paying a trip to Italy for our early college and collegiate high school and dual enrollment students. The Learning Support Commons, this is our tutoring lab, and they are offered on all the sites, from all the main campuses, and students can come and seek free tutoring. And we've had about 47,900 students log in or come for tutoring opportunities through our support learning centers. The support learning centers also help with makeup testing and other unique things, work with our OSSD staff to do double time for testing and things of that nature. This is led by the academic side of the house. They provide the tutors and things of that nature. Athletics, we usually average about 100 players a year, and we're doing very well. In a recent Blue and White, there was an article there about our athletes who earn 3.0 GPAs and some who earned 4.0, so they're student athletes, so education comes first, and we try to stick close to that. And our students are transferring, some are in the pros in baseball or semi-pros. Our basketball team just made it to the state, I think we lost the second round.
Semi-finals.
Semi-finals, second round. And so volleyball continues to qualify for the state, we have a new basketball coach, and she won 10 games this year. And for us, we might say 10, but that's more than we've won in the last three of four years. We're excited. So we continue to move, and we hope that we'll be able to get the board to come out to some of our games like we've done in the past. We didn't get to do that this year, but next year we'll do that. Career Development Services, this is something that we had, and then we dropped and now we picked it back up. A lot of students are really looking for service opportunities, and this department can do so much more in helping students tie down what career they really are seeking instead of changing programs over and over and over. And Jim Gagne, in partnership with the associate provost, are working with this team to provide several opportunities. We also have online services, and we've had about 60,000 hits in our online services during the 2009 year. And so we're doing some very unique things, we're expanding out into different types of co-ops, different types of internship opportunities, and so we're looking forward to continuing to move in that area.
Online services, would the person, like, if they want to help with their resume, put their resume up, and the person would respond back to them?
For our students, that is correct.
Oh, that's great.
That is correct. We do have some services for non-students for a fee as well, if you're not an SPC student and you want to come in and get help, you can do that for a fee. Student Life and Leadership, this is the new term for student activities. We have developed a new idea, we didn't develop it, it's really in the literature, that we're not just here playing at parties. We're actually about teaching the student government process, teaching them how to be leaders, and providing meaningful services on campuses. We still have some of the cake and punch and all of those kinds of things, but we're really moving into a different direction with critical thinking and other activities. And our Student Life and Leadership team, they're leading that on each of the campuses and doing unique opportunities and unique things for students.
We're just about done, I think we've taken advantage of our 15 minutes.
They don't tell time very well.
I was trying to catch us up, you know.
No, he did get it. He's doing good. He's doing good. Many of you, all of you go to a commencement, and you may not know that the students that attend commencement really only represent a fraction of those that actually apply. In May, we may have 700, 800 students.
Just found out, we have 175 high school students alone.
This May?
Up from 30 or 80 last year.
Wow.
But we'll have 750 to 800 students actually attend the May commencement. But we had last May about 2005 to be precise to apply, 85 percent of those were successful. The 15 percent that were not successful, through the degree audit process and graduation check process, we communicated with them to let them know what deficiency they have and what course they need to take to go ahead and complete their credential. We are in the process, Tanja, myself, Stan Vitato, and Jesse Coraggio, of defining, formally defining, graduation rates and retention rates, things that we have not really formally defined in the past. So we'll present that to you in the future. These are some of the 2009, 2010 milestones that we and the student affairs teams have been working on. We're never resting, we're always looking for ways to improve, as I said. Just some of the highlights, the Mel Net Online Payment Plan, we implemented that in January, that was a best practice. It's a third party that specializes in payment plans and kind of a tuition installment for students. We had our own internal payment plan, it required a notary, it required a cosigner, it was very time-consuming for our student affairs staff. This is completely seamless, and our student affairs staff is not even involved, students do this online. So it saved our staff a tremendous amount of time, reduced some of the bottlenecks this January. Tanja mentioned starting an early awarding of aid for 2010, 11. We are already processing what are called ICERS, the electronic financial aid applications for the new year, and it's March 16th, and normally we don't do that until June. So by doing that early, we are now communicating with students early and telling them what they need if they've been selected for verification, let's get that taken care of so we're not delaying that process. Utilizing OPS funds, I touched on that a moment ago, to help in the MAP during peak periods, inflect team members from human resources. Yeah, in the last bullet, the Centerville 1908 College Report, this is the second year that we've gotten to double the number of students that participated in that from last year.
So where are we going next? One, we're working on enhancing the frequency and timeliness of the communication to our students. And one of the things that Devron brought up was, are you guys doing degree audits? You know, so I'm sitting here thinking, we can email them and tell them, you're at 45 credits, now you have these courses left, you know, to do. So that's something that we can also add to that list. About a month ago, the student affairs leaders met for two days to look at the entire stream of processing from the time a student applied until they're sitting in the seat, to look at gaps, and what are we doing well, and what are we not doing well? And so we've come up with some ideas with Mike and Pat and the others, working on that. Increase the use of college assessment results. You know, we survey the students to death. I mean, they do an entry survey, a graduation survey, and enroll student survey, and we need to learn to look at those better and use those for planning, but also report back to the student on how they voted, you know, how they graded us and what's going on. Improving the collaboration with Pinellas County School Board, that was already in the making. Increase the amount of online services and processes and forms to students. We found that some of the services we offer, they have to still come to campus and get the forms, or ask us to fax them, so we've gotta change that. Continue to improve the student services in all areas, especially the MAP, and increase data utilization to create a system-wide retention plan and process. So we have a lot to do, we're moving in the right direction. The support that we've received has just been overwhelming and very, very much so appreciated. Sorry we took so long, but if you thought this was long, wait till you ask us to come back for some real detail. And just thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Any questions?
I just have two real quick questions. First of all, that was amazing, that's just so much more than I ever dreamed was going on out there. And I mean that in a good way.
Okay.
First of all, earlier in your comments, you had talked about, you're talking with some of the other colleges and talking about wait lines and so forth. If you could, you know, take budget issues aside, if you could do two things that you see other community colleges around the state doing that you feel are just really way ahead of the curve, that you could implement here, what would they be?
I got one, and that's, I mentioned earlier that 50 percent of our students are taking one online course, and 25 percent of our students are taking all of their courses online. Most of those students live in the Tampa Bay area, and there's some that live outside of Tampa Bay area, there's some that live in other countries. And those that live in the Pinellas County area could come to campus for service, but there's no reason that they have to, or they should have to. What I, my vision is to have a very robust back-office process that can, through email, through live chat, through phone, service the needs of our remote students. And we're not there yet. I mentioned our call center, it's very low-level information that they're providing. We don't have a very robust cyber operation, so that's, that would be my...
Is there a model out there right now that's doing the job?
Florida FTCJ, whatever their name is today, over Jacksonville.
Okay, that's one.
And then what I would do is very expensive, but it is always easy for students to come to the campus and go to one building where all of the support services are located, instead of having to go here for here, and here for here, and over here. And it wouldn't be easy, it would be something that would cost, would cost a lot, and a lot of movement on the sites, but best practices, they usually have a student services building where everything is the hub, it's where they would go. And so some of our designs, looking at that, will make it easier.
Thank you. My second question is, when we started the discussion on the textbooks, and we've had some of the workshops, which were great, can you guesstimate what percentage of your budget is from the revenues from textbooks? Because I know that there's a portion of those revenues that go to student services. Do you have any ideas?
I don't have that in front of me, but it was given to me.
It's very little.
It's, it's not a lot.
It's things like student assistance and specialty things that they do. That's one reason we're doing though, this, we've challenged them to come in with...
It's about 400,000.
We've asked them to come in with some, but there's no full composition out of it.
What's your budget?
It's about 300,000 to 400,000. I thought it was like around 380.
Your budget, or is it...
Is it your budget?
No, the student assistance.
His question is your budget, what's your budget?
No, I don't have that.
Student service budget. Do you know the student service budget, who sent you the budget?
From Ontario?
No, total.
From the college budget? It's separated in different departments.
Hundred percent out of...
What percent?
That's a guess, that's an estimate.
What'd you say?
Ten, maybe.
Wow.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? That was great. Thank you very much. Very, very good, very good. Any other business to come before the board?
Have me a couple.
Please.
Just a few, these are from Tivon, a little testament. Just a couple of quick things that we're doing a little differently, and I wanted to share with you. We've given a lot of thought to how to do this consulate core college, and we've been less than excited about how, where we are right now. And this was an outside group that became part of the college, and we were gonna do certain things, and you're all familiar with it. They've never quite understood that, I mean, they're still thinking of themselves as an outside group that's working with the college, but we're, the whole budget is the college. And we're in the process of maybe hiring an executive director and spending other dollars with this entity at a time when we really don't have the dollars to do some other things, like to hire a faculty. And so we've been giving it a lot of thought, and we've been trying to find a director. The search process has been difficult, because we have a very formal process, a very diversity-oriented process, they're a private sector group, they look at it a little differently, how it goes about. So we've been going back and forth, and we've come to the conclusion, if there's no real objection, that we would be better served to not have that contract right now. And rather than work with them as a part of St. Pete College, the State Department has approached us about doing training programs for honorary consuls and for some of the regular consuls, and really having a strong partnership with the Department of State as opposed to this consulate core college. If they want to work with us, we could work together on projects, but it would be a mutual situation, not us becoming the consulate core college. They have a function that relates largely to recognizing that they exist and what their role is, and to be honest, what are some of the benefits of being an honorary consul, where our function is more training. If the Secretary of State's office in Washington says to us, through Gus, or through somebody else, would you develop a series of four courses for new consuls to take, through our corporate training, at Allstate, for example, that's a model we could get into. And then if the courses don't make, we don't offer them. If they make, we break even or make money on that. But the model we're putting ourselves into is a tough model to succeed for them and for us. We've, I put it on hold because of the budget this last week, and they're gonna be here next week to talk to us. And unless there's an enthusiastic feeling by the board that we should be, hire people right now for this group, I mean, there's no, we said we, as a goal, we would try to have 500 members. To be fair, we haven't hired the executive director yet because of these delays, but right now there are seven members. Not even all the current members have rejoined. And it's just a difficult time to do this, and then to take some of our dollars and do it right now. If we just heard a good student service presentation, that would be the same source of dollars. So I'm recommending that we, you know, look with the attorney to exercise the ending of that contract, and then working with the Department of State and with them to do training. There is an advantage when we have our student government up and operating to have consuls around and work with, as you know, the term consul really... around and work with the, as you know, the term consul really applies to the folks in consulates for the US around the world, but as they name honorary consuls, that's great and we can work with them. But it's, anyway, to make a long story short, I think we're ready. And I'm sensing from the board a similar feeling and, but I, we've never voted on it. And I don't think we necessarily need to vote on this one until we actually come forward with contract termination, but if there's any sense different than that, it'd be a good time for me to know it.
Well, the finances aren't for them. They don't have any money.
They have no money.
Yeah, they have no money.
I trust your judgment on that.
Where's it going to come from?
Yeah, there was a feeling that long-term, if they went from 500 to 1,000 and they charged $20 a piece, some money would come in. But we're talking about starting off with an $80,000 tab for the director and then going to be a secretary.
Who's going to pay for that?
We were going to pay for it. So, I'm recommending we not, basically, bottom line.
I would support that. Any other?
Well, the type of budget you're, you know- Absolutely. You've got to look at everything. So- Absolutely. And I really, we've been advised by the State Department informally that they really want to work with us, so I think we can do, we can reach the objective. And to be honest, Dr. Cutler and I talked about this before he left, and if we couldn't have a merging that made a lot of sense, he was, he understood that. I've talked to him about it a couple of months, but it's not something that's aimed at that. It's aimed at the situation nonetheless.
Financially?
Right.
Well, I think you're going to have to make some tough calls between now and when the budget's done, so.
Yeah, if I'm going to have to tell somebody else we're not going to hire Val's faculty member, I'd rather do this one. Right. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
One other thing, we are, we do have a sad departure of Brian Fettig. A happy departure because he's happy. Brian is leaving us, I'm not turning. Sid is not happy. Sid is whining, but everybody-
Good line.
Brian has become a real partner for all of us, in particular for Sid, and he's got an excellent opportunity, Caroline with PCSU to be their consul and at a time when he's about to have a child and lots of positives for Brian. So, we're wishing him well, but his last day is within a day or two.
We'll give him our best.
Story to see him go.
And one other thing is we, somebody alluded to it a minute ago, we have moved our international education program from under Ann Cooper, which was kind of a, the stretch from DO to the campuses to under Karen, who's agreed to take that on. So, Vilaeta Suite and that operation will report to Karen. And in your personnel report today, you accepted a recommendation that the downtown and midtown be under the direction of Yvonne directly, which takes some workload off of Karen's. And we've done a little mini structural thing, partly based on workload, but partly based on having a single presence downtown here. Somebody knows who to talk to. And she picks grades. It had nothing to do with it. But anyways, just wanted to know that was in there. We didn't get to talk about it. And that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you for, thank you for listening to that presentation.
Oh, no.
We appreciate it.
That was great. That was great. Well, our next meeting is Wednesday, April 21 at the EpiCenter.
I don't know. Yes, that's Dr. Shirley.
That's Thursday. That's right. Okay. Thank you all again, everybody that was responsible for this great meeting and this great spread this morning. Thank you again. We are adjourned.
Thursday.
We've got a couple of things.
I know. Brian, I love Brian.
Back to the line.